Monday, August 13th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where with its stand one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I will make notice that we met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters of personnel and legal issues. In the meeting was myself, Commissioner Abel, Commissioner Larkin, Commissioner Nagel, Commissioner Booker, and on the phone joining us was Commissioner Farhi, who will not be at this meeting this evening. All right, we'll go ahead on consent agenda. Do any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull out Item D.
Item D. I want to pull Item N. Anything else? Does any staff have anything they'd like to pull from their consent agenda? Anyone from the public? Okay.
Wait, can we also pull out the L?
Item L? The planning module?
Yeah.
Sewage planning module? Okay. All right. Then can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Items D, L, and N?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda minus Items D, N, L, and N, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Most in pass is six to nothing. Okay.
Should we do the community recognitions before we address those?
Do you want to do that?
It's probably better.
I'm fine with it. Okay. Any objection? All right, let's go ahead and do the community recognitions. Mr. Zankowski?
Normally, we do the items that we pulled out, or we're going to slide them in where they belong.
I was just hoping just to get the community recognitions out of the way.
So we can get the people out.
Sure. We can let everybody go.
Okay. All right. Mr. Zankowski?
Okay, the first one that we have is recognizing with the Wayne Business Association and the Music is Love Foundation for the Outstanding Music Fest that was done earlier this year. If you had the opportunity to be there for it, I think you saw one outstanding event that was done. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, a lot of volunteer time that goes on, incredible amount of time, and it shows the high caliber, high quality businesses that we have in the Wayne Business Association and what they put together for this event. I'd match this against anyone in the Philadelphia region for how well this was done and how well it was received by the community. It was outstanding. So, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'll let them speak onto this and present these plaques to all of you at this time if you can come forward.
Should we go ahead and read it? Okay. The Radnor Township Board of Commissioners would like to recognize the Music is Love Foundation in conjunction with the Wayne Business Association for their collaboration of the Wayne Music Festival. The Music is Love Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation established by Ken Kearns and Charlie Hoder and their families. It is dedicated to organizing and promoting music events to raise money and awareness for the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Presented today, thank you all very much for all your hard work and for the wonderful event that you sponsor that the community loves so much. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Should I take the microphone? I love the microphone. Thank you for the recognition. It's really nice to have an event that's so well-received and supported by police, fire, public works, the township administration. It does take a lot of people to make this thing go off without a hitch, and when you put that many people into our town to see all those coordinated efforts of the different departments working hand-in-hand really makes a statement. I can't tell you how many compliments I've gotten from people that come in from out of town into Wayne to see this thing about not only how cool is our little town, but you can see the support that you get from all the people behind the scenes that make something like that happen. So, we really appreciate you all giving us the reins to kind of do this thing every year, and you know, we take great pride in making sure it's done right, and it really is a good reflection on our town, all the local businesses, and all the, you know, the one day for everybody in the township to really make a mark for not only the people in our Radnor Township, but for all the visitors that come in for that event. So, thank you to Bob and his team that really support us tremendously and let us do our thing. We look forward to having it again next year and many years to come. And Chris, if you want to say something on the...
You said it all. All right. There you go. (Laughter)
We have one more recognition to do this evening, and it's for Mainline School Night. If you're not familiar with that organization, you should. They do, again, an outstanding job educating the community. They're celebrating 80 years of providing this service to the community and surrounding area. When we think about 80 years of providing that service and the growth that has happened during that time and continuing that program and maintaining the high standards and the success of that program, that speaks volumes of the people who were involved in that program. And it's always an honor to be able to work alongside with Mainline School Night, how you've participated in keeping the Hartford Mansion in phenomenal shape. You're a great partner, working with the township on that. Wendy, it's been outstanding being able to work with you and your entire staff there. Outstanding in being able to work with Steve McNellis and his staff too, and everybody here in the township. It's been just an outstanding opportunity for us. And at this time, the Board of Commissioners would like to recognize you for your 80th anniversary.
Sure. Thanks, Bob. And as Bob said, 80 years of being not only a member of the community, but an asset to the community. So, proudly, I'll read what's written here. "The Township of Radnor with an award of appreciation is hereby granted to Mainline School Night in recognition of your 80th anniversary. Please know that the citizens, commissioners, and staff of Radnor Township sincerely appreciate and thank you for your outstanding performance and lasting contributions to help make Radnor Township the best place to live, work, and do business on the main line." So, with that, thank you very much to Mainline School Night.
So, thank you very much to the Board of Commissioners and the township. We're deeply honored to receive this recognition in celebration of Mainline School Night's 80th anniversary. I'm pleased to represent Mainline School Night and the Board of Directors, as you can see, many of whom are here tonight, including our Board Chair Jay Einsbeneer, who's a proud Radnor resident.
Very proud.
It all began in 1938 with 11 night classes for adults at Radnor High School. Today, we're a nonprofit organization that provides approximately 1,000 programs to thousands of community residents with many partnerships throughout the main line. We hope that you'll take a class. The catalog is just coming out for the fall and winter, and pretty much anything you want to learn, you can learn at Mainline School Night. For the last 48 years, Mainline School Night's called Kritzberg Center Home. This treasure in the main line makes it possible for us to offer programs, not just at night, but throughout the day and on weekends as well. We'd like to express our gratitude to Bob Zankowski and his team, and Steve McNellis and his team, dedicated team for their extraordinary support, whether it be helping establish our new 80th anniversary welcome garden, designed and planted by Chanticleer, replacing the front steps most recently, or even offering space in this room when we have overflow crowds for events that we can't accommodate at the Kritzberg Center. Bob and his team have supported us every step of the way, and we cherish the partnership. Our 80th anniversary theme line, Grow, Renew, Sustain embodies our commitment to continually evolve to meet the changing needs of the community and suggest the possibilities and bright future that lie ahead. We're very honored tonight to be here. Thank you. (Applause). We're very fortunate here in Radnor to have so many wonderful assets for our residents and for people even outside who come. I know there are a lot of people from outside Radnor who come to the Mainline School, so... All right, back to business. Item D. That was you, Commissioner Abel?
Yes, thank you. Lieutenant Dietrich, if you could pull out the police report and just walk through some of those drug incidents, particularly the one that we read about last week in the main line suburban life, I thought, I put that on social media, and it was viewed by over 900 people, so that definitely has caught the interest of the township.
Absolutely. So, for our drug violations, Officer Hand made a stop for a suspended registration. He ended up getting numerous containers and packages of marijuana, oxycodin, $5,000 in cash, and a loaded semi-automatic handgun out of the car. The one you speak of is we had a juvenile. Parents brought in some marijuana that they found in her possession. Upon interviewing her, we were able to determine that she got it online, or she didn't get it online, she found her drug dealer online, made arrangements on Snapchat. So, we actually had our undercover set up with this. We ended up finding the gentleman and had him sell to us, and we arrested him. And we learned that through our investigation, he probably got a couple other kids unfortunately too. Another one was Officer Lundster stopped the vehicle, ended up getting marijuana, a lot of pills for hydrocodine. Cocaine was also located in the car. We've had one overdose. We had a 27-year-old in the southwest portion of the township, which we believe is going to be opioid. We had six people that were arrested for a small amount of marijuana out of their cars. And we had four incidents where people reported the odor of marijuana or drug activity, but we were unable to substantiate them.
Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and make a motion to accept that or approve Item D?
Sure. Can I get a motion to accept the department monthly reports?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving Item D, acceptance of monthly, department monthly reports, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing. Thank you, Lieutenant Dietrich, and thank you for the hard work and the good work of your department. Thank you. Okay, on to Item N, or yeah, L, I'm sorry. Commissioner Booker, Item L.
I wanted to pull this item and have a review to ensure, prior to our resolution approving the sewer module for 427 Lancaster Avenue, that all conditions are met and all requirements are in order.
Staff, address that, or do we need Mr. Norsini?
Yeah, I can address that. Yes, they've provided us a completed planning module, which we reviewed, and it has all of the downstream approval letters from all of the other agencies downstream, and it's ready to go. This is the last step before it goes to DEP.
So, I see in the packet that there was a letter that says, "Note: Springfield Township claims to have an overload system and is not allowing connections." Can you review when that was resolved and how it was resolved?
The applicant's engineer is here, and I believe she can take you through that process. She want to...
Do you want to come on up to the podium, please? Good evening, thank you. You just go right up there. Or you can, if you want to face, yeah, just kind of flip it around. There you go. Thank you.
So, Springfield Township did provide us conveyance capacity for the project and placed the project on their connection management plan. So, that has since happened since that letter.
And were there any conditions, or were there any, how was that resolved? And what, so, what I'm looking for is any kind of specificity you can provide on what the issue was, and is it resolved for all parties, or was it only resolved for you? Or how does that, what's the status of Springfield Township right now and their capacity issues?
Right. So, they had established available capacity for anyone to use in that township as they're requested, sort of on a first-come, first-served basis. So, for anybody, it is open to acceptance at this time, provided that they, you know, apply through all the proper procedures.
Okay.
There's also a letter from Springfield in your packet that states that.
My second question relates to the recordation of the capacity vis-a-vis the total system capacity. So, currently, your facility is going from a doctor's office to 22 condominium units, significantly increasing the equivalent dwelling units utilized per day within the system. My question is for staff. How are we maintaining and tracking all of these new connections and allocating the amount of existing capacity versus what is being approved?
To give you a brief answer on that, RHM takes care of that. The requests come from the township and the RHM, and they track it.
The township does no independent review or tracking of their equivalent dwelling units that are allocated per applicant?
Well, we do a review. That's what my office does for these when they are submitted.
Well, my question is, how do we know when we've used everything up if we're not tracking?
RHM tells us that. They're the municipal authority that handles the wastewater flows from Radnor. They tell us that, as do all the other downstream users.
So, the township does no independent review of the capacity of the system? Our system is only a portion of RHM?
That's a different question than what you asked me before. Yes, we do an evaluation of the downstream capacity of the system. That's part of the review that we do, is the capacity of the pipes to make sure that they can hydraulically handle it. The administrative tracking of the number of EDUs is handled by RHM.
Is there any tracking of the capacity that's being utilized for the township portion of the RHM system on an ongoing basis to verify sufficient...
Yes.
...volume?
Yes.
And is that available to the public or to individuals? Can we make that available?
We probably could. I could talk to Steve about that. I mean, it's a tool that I use to calculate the capacity of the lines.
Is there a spreadsheet that keeps track of every...
There is a very detailed spreadsheet. It's an electronic model of the system. It's a hydraulic model of the system.
So, there's no spreadsheet showing applicant capacity utilized?
I could probably break it down and put something together for you if you want to give me specific parameters that you're looking for.
Well, I'm very concerned about our capacity within the system and for this facility as well as all new ones, and as people may or may not be aware, we did have a sanitary sewer overflow situation in our township recently. We have massive rains today and very near overcapacity. Every single new facility draws on the availability of sewer capacity, and I want to make sure that the township is making, keeping track of that. So, yeah, I would like to have a copy of that, whatever you can give me to show that in the township, we have 427 coming on, we had the doctor's office leaving. We should be deleting the doctor's office from the model and adding 22 condominium units, and there should be a cumulative model that we can go to and that we can show to people so that when we say we have capacity, it's not just a matter of Springfield or RHM checking it. That's what my concern is.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, your name was?
Christina Rubel with Ebert Engineering.
All right, thank you, Christina. Thank you for being here. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, well, so Commissioner Booker, your concern...
So, Roger said he will get me a copy of the hydraulic model that we can analyze to have some sort of public and commissioner verification of that we're tracking these deletions and additions.
So, that's work you're asking for from Roger that is independent of what is currently Item L?
No. It's completely and directly related to Item L, and it's not additional work. It is, so, this is a sewer module. We have deleted from our sewer system the doctor's office.
Do you need that information in order to make a decision on Item L this evening?
I would like that information as soon as practicable after the meeting.
Okay. Do any other commissioners need that information?
I think that's a total waste of our contractor's time. Roger is a certified professional engineer, and he, when he signs and approves this stuff, he's putting his license on the line. And from my experience working with RHM now for two years, the analysis is very detailed. The fact of the matter in this specific case was this was approved prior to the moratorium, and due to a paperwork issue in Springfield, it didn't get approved. But it had been approved before that Springfield moratorium. The problem in Springfield has to do with a line in Springfield, not a Radnor system line. So, I think to put any time into this is a complete waste of taxpayer dollars.
Well, I'm surprised you would say that, John, because Radnor could end up in the exact situation of Springfield where we find out with no warning that, oh, there's no capacity. Now, I reviewed the sanitary sewer capacity issue with DEP and other officials. I was assured by DEP that the township would be maintaining a list of additions and deletions from our system so that we could verify sufficient capacity. It's not a waste of time. It is valuable to the public. It's of interest to developers and others to be fully aware of when we are at capacity for our sewer system. So, what you just said is absolutely silly and wrong.
Rich, once again, you really twist people's words. I didn't say it was silly to maintain those records. What I said was Roger does maintain those records. And if you look at the application, the applications are done on a delta basis so that if you're, in fact, if you're reducing the number of EDUs, that gets tracked in the system. But in this case, they were making application because they were increasing the number of EDUs. So, the information exists. I'm sure if some private person would like to have the information, they can request it from Steve, and he'll be glad to deal with them on it.
We'd like to request it. We're requesting it now so that we have it. And it's an importance to all developers and constituents of Radnor, and what it is is an assurance that we have adequate capacity when we add new facilities, new demand, so that we don't pollute the waters or the lands of the township or of the Commonwealth.
Okay. Well, what I'm hearing is that we have that information. It sounds as if you can receive it in a timely manner when Mr. Norsini returns. So, I would like to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2018-84, 427 East Lancaster Sewage Facility Planning Module. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. So, any other comment? Okay.
Public comment?
So, any...
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
It was my intention tonight to address this board. However, Commissioner Farhi is not here, so I will be back in September to address my comments to the board as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Does anyone have...
Did you want to talk about the sewer system at all? Okay.
It's a boring subject, sewer capacity, for most people. It's a valuable one, though. I mean, it's around us. I know that John is well aware, that Commissioner Nagel is well aware, that Tridifferent also had a moratorium. You've had townships around us. And even on a gut level, and I always like to say, bring it down to fifth grade level, when you're adding, you're going from zero bathrooms on a parking lot to, maybe it's 1,130, it's probably not, it's probably half that, 700 bathrooms on Villanova, or how many bathrooms in the dorm rooms. It's a big increase, you guys. Period. End of story. I don't need Amy or an engineer to tell me it is or isn't. I know this to be true. There's going to be 1,130 and other things there, and that stressed, that will stress the sewer capacity. Yet, nothing happened there, and this one little building with 22 new bathrooms minus the existing bathrooms, they were shut down for, I don't even know. I feel very bad for them because they did get caught in the cracks there. But it's something that I think is going to be a national, I don't call it crisis, but you're going to see moratoriums a lot more. And so, it is good that we would have opaque record-keeping. And sometimes I don't like your delivery, Commissioner Booker, but I think it's a valid thing.
When?
Lots, Rich. Just let's get the spreadsheet so that people can look at it and people can understand it. And it should be simpler than maybe what we've been led to believe in Radnor Township because we know the developments. It's not like we're a huge city here. Thank you.
I'd like to remind Leslie that the addition at Villanova actually resulted in a reduction of flow into our sewer system because they diverted part of the sewers to Lower Marion.
And I get that, John. I was thinking that absolutely that's like increased sewage. Where it went is all around us, and there's...
Well, since the discussions about capacity...
John, there's no reason to, there's no reason to attack a person...
Nobody's attacking except you, Rich.
Gentlemen, please.
Don't attack the constituents, John.
Good evening, Jane.
Jane Gally, 7th Ward. I will tell Mr. Nagle that Villanova did affect my area. DeBaron Lane had three and a half foot of raw sewage in their basements when those new buildings on the south campus went up because somebody wasn't paying attention to the capacity that came over there. We had people out of their homes for over six months because they were contaminated so badly. So, it happens, and that's why I don't, I mean, being vigilant and understanding what you got helps without, so you don't have a problem like three and a half feet of raw sewage in people's basements. Period.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no additional public...
Madam President, just to add, and maybe we're going to make this a whole lot easier, is Steve has the number of units that we have available within the township. So, he has those. It's not, you know, Roger does the math and that with the capacities when he looks at these and compares with DEP of what's available for units when developments transfer, what's available and what's not. So, it's, I don't think it's as complicated as that, so I will get those from Steve. Unfortunately, Steve's on vacation, which he well deserved. So, we'll get you those numbers from that. So, we have those numbers of how many they are. I think the bigger issue we should have, as this board should look into, is Springfield and actually how they have accounted for the EDU...
and actually how they have accounted for the EDUs back here to this township because I think a lot have been given away to other townships. And so I think that's where we need to do our homework out, and I'd ask the board to consider looking into that because that has been a very big issue of how that has gone on and how one community can hold all the way up the line called the issue. So I would ask that the board seriously look at that and pursue that option as well.
Commissioner Brozinski, I would ask that we have the minutes reflect that those numbers will be provided, sewage capacity for the township to the public and made available.
We'll provide that at the September meeting. No problem.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. All right. So seeing no additional comment, I will go ahead and call the vote on item L, Resolution 2018-84, 427 East Lancaster Sewage Facility Planning Module. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Can you abstain?
No.
Why are you abstaining? You need to have a reason why you're abstaining.
You can abstain.
Excuse me?
Abstain.
Okay. Motion passes five to nothing when one abstention. All right. Onto item N. I pulled that. I just wanted a little bit more information. Mr. White, so this seems like a very interesting product that you're bringing forward to create a financial dashboard. And I read through the PowerPoint that you provided with our packet of information because I had not heard of this before. I'm guessing because it was agreed to prior to my coming on to the board. So I just wanted to get a little more information about it. And certainly, one of the questions I definitely had about it is, what kind of analytics are we going to get from this? I'd like to know about the interaction with the, how the township's going to utilize this, how our residents are going to utilize this, and will we get that kind of information?
Sure. Well, I appreciate you taking the time to go through the information provided in the packet. That should help. As a little bit of background for everyone else, the township agreed to enter into a contract with Tyler Technologies back in 2016 for an entity-wide software upgrade. At that time, Tyler did not have this product, which is a, they call it citizen transparency. It's an outward-facing module that is linked up to the township's financial database through our website. So to answer some of your questions is that the type of analytics or the type of information anyone will be able to pull down is going to be up to them. It will, what it'll do is it'll have a connection, not a live connection, will refresh it probably daily. So it'll be up-to-the-day accurate information. It'll have all of the township's revenue information broken down into the same categories as we report on, in all of our financial statements between real estate taxes, business taxes, departmental revenue. You can, a user will be able to go all the way down to the line item detail, both on the revenue and the expenditure side. Currently, we put, as approved earlier in the other part of the consent agenda with the dispersments, we put all of our checks, accounts payable checks, out on the website for public review. This will have that same functionality, but it'll expand to include all of our expenditures, including payroll and related expenses there. So a user can go in and get a more comprehensive look at not just revenue but spending as well. That information isn't just limited to revenues and expenses. We can break it down to vendor analysis and other dimensions. We'll have to talk about that. The capabilities are limited only to how we have our general ledger set up, so they're pretty detailed, as I think most of the departments would agree. So the capabilities will be very comprehensive for folks to pull down table information. You can download it to Excel. It can be summarized in graphs. And then within the different layers of information, you can drill in. So you can start at a very high level and then drill into the data all the way down again to the line item detail. And that's all done online. It's a program that is hosted by Tyler on the cloud, so it's available to anyone with an internet connection. You don't have to be here. You don't have to request it. It's just available. So this is part of the reason why, going back to 2016, we selected Tyler. It's a company that is dedicated to providing municipal financial solutions, so they are always looking and reacting to what municipalities need. And something that offers this level of transparency, we feel, is a tremendous asset. And again, part of the reason why we selected them is to be able to offer this type of functionality.
So how will it look on the website? Will it, so will that initial dashboard, which has, it looks like bar graphs on it, will that be placed right on the homepage, or is this something that people will link off of, or how will that work?
It'll be a link. So it'll be a link from our website to the citizens transparency website. And at that point, the user will have a menu that we'll be able to customize, including frequently asked questions. We'll have the opportunity to customize that specific to Radnor. And so that's what the user will have when they get to that screen, and then they'll be able to navigate through the menu. And the menu is very intuitive. If you're used to navigating a website, you'll feel very comfortable navigating through this.
Well, it seemed like a great, a great product and something that would really improve, you know, people if they want to, how deeply they want to interact with the finances of the township, so.
Sure. And one other note to that is, you know, financial transparency is always something that we take very seriously, and we post all of those reports out to the website now. The problem with them is that they're very static and usually outdated within a few months of them being posted. This will keep all of that information out on the website very fresh and real. So brings the numbers to life a little bit.
Great. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any other questions?
I have. Bill, will the public be asked to agree to terms and conditions in order to access the site, or will they be required to pay any fee to avail themselves of this information online?
No to both of those.
Will they be required to identify themselves?
No. Yeah, the users will not be required to set up an account to be able to view this information. It's available to anybody who accesses it.
And the information available will allow the public to, for example, drill down and see payments to specific vendors, including any contractors or service providers, professional or otherwise?
Absolutely, yeah. Now, we provide that now. It's just a little bit harder to get to because you have to go through all the different dispersment reports, but this will allow someone to do the search in real time.
And that will be updated on, it'll be a monthly, it'll be, since they're approved monthly, it won't be entered, or you're saying that, for instance, payments made to a consultant will be updated on the day that they are made?
Yeah. So every, the warrants that you guys are approving through the consent agenda, those are run on a weekly basis. They'll be available for inspection as they're run.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Any additional staff comment? Any pub, oh, I need to make a motion first, don't I? I apologize. All right. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2018-80, amending Resolution 2016-60, adding the Tyler Citizens Transparency Module to the ERP program at an annual price of $12,000 plus implementation costs of $3,500? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any second.
Second.
Okay. Any additional commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-80, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing. Okay. Onto appointments to various boards and commissions. Prior to this evening's meeting, we interviewed several individuals. We interviewed some for Carfac. And I think we want to go ahead and make at least one appointment to Carfac, gentlemen?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So Commissioner Clark, you want me to take this?
Yeah, please, since I wasn't out.
So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to appoint Mr. Al Murphy, Albert Murphy, to Carfac. He came forward and indicated his interest and seems as if he is, would be a good candidate.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right. Any commissioner comment to this appointment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All right. I'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Albert Murphy to Carfac, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes five to one. All right. And I would like to note, we still do, are looking for Carfac individuals. So if anyone's interested in applying for Carfac, we are still accepting applications. And we will be making appointments to the Parks and Rec Committee at our next meeting. All right. So we're going to go ahead and move up an item from the, from new business. I know that many people in the community are interested in this. Commissioner Abel, you requested this, so maybe do you want to do a little intro?
Well, yeah.
First, I think we're going to do the mosquitoes first, and then we'll do public comment. Okay? If that's all right?
Thank you. I think it was last week, the township sent out a notice informing residents that there was mosquito testing in the area and that there would be subsequent spraying. I know I received a lot of emails and questions on this program, and I thought it was best, while we have the opportunity, just to get out in front, inform the residents. And so we are not in a position where we have to explain after the fact. We have the time and we have the capabilities. I think the township manager indicated that he will send out a telephone call as well when we set that date. So, you know, I appreciate the staff being here tonight just to talk through the email and what we can expect over the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Zankowski, want to introduce our health officer?
Marie Carbonara. She is our health inspector, and she has been following this all the way along since our first notification that we had a positive test pool for West Nile and has stayed on this and had been working through the process about coordinating with the county and the state on a spraying program regarding this issue. So I'll turn this over to Marie.
Thank you, Marie, for being with us. Thank you.
Okay. So I was asked to give an update about, on the anticipated mosquito spraying. And fortunately, actually, just a few hours ago, I got the formal notification from the county. So the Delaware County Mosquito Born Disease Control Program will conduct an ultra-low-volume mosquito adulticide spraying, portions of Radnor and Delaware County. Residential and recreational areas within this treatment area will be sprayed to control adult mosquitoes. This is a result of the high trap counts and the identification of positive mosquito pools in the area. The spray will take place Friday, August 17. They're going to begin around 7:30 and they should conclude around 11 o'clock at night. The rain date is scheduled for Monday, the 20th. The Delaware County Mosquito Born Disease Control Program will perform the work using a truck-mounted spraying equipment with the business license that will be visible on the equipment. The product used will be Delta Guard. They'll apply, it'll be applied at a rate of .66 ounces per acre. This product is designed to provide quick knockdown and effective control of adult mosquitoes. The EPA assures the product does not pose risks of concern to general population, children, or pregnant women. We know when it's applied, according to the label. I guess one other thing to mention is residents can obtain an application online or through our department to register for the pesticide hypersensitivity registry. So basically, they fill out the application, they get a doctor to sign it, and they can submit it to the Department of Agriculture. And that's basically a notification system. So anybody within a certain area of the spraying would get notified by the applicator. So I think that's pretty much it. Can I answer any questions?
Marie, I had one constituent ask me about whether it has any effect on other insects, and they were particularly concerned about bees.
That's probably not a question for me. I mean, I can get the answer to that and get back to you on it.
When was the last time Radnor sprayed?
I think it was last year, actually.
Last year?
Yeah.
Are there any areas that test positive that decline the program to spray?
Have they?
Do you know of any?
Yeah. No, I don't know of any. And I don't even know if that's an option.
Yeah. So this is a state-run program, but the county does the spraying?
The county does the spraying, correct.
Okay. But the state decides if it needs to be sprayed?
Yeah. The DEP oversees everything. And then the county, well, the county does all the testing, and then they pretty much make the decision based on the testing results, you know, who will get sprayed.
And the entire township will be sprayed, or just certain areas where the, so those streets that were listed, where they tested positive mosquitoes?
Correct. So the route is pretty much along those lines where they tested positive. Okay. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Well, Marie is still here. Does anyone from the public have any questions? Okay.
Madam President, what we-
Sarah has one.
I'm sorry, Sarah, do you want to?
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Hill, John, probably because bees go into their hive at dusk, it will be fine.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm sorry, Mr. Zankowski.
Since we were notified late today, we will be preparing the phone call. We will put a call out tomorrow, and then we will also put one out the day prior to and the day of. So I know, I apologize in advance if you're going to get a lot of calls from us. We want to put as much notification out, as well as the website. We'll send the emails out too, as well, just so everybody is aware.
Can you outline what neighborhoods are going to be?
Marie, I'm going to ask you on this. I know that there was a requirement that was in there that they did not want us to release the map of where they were spraying, which seems kind of counterproductive. You'd think you'd want to tell everybody as a heads-up to the neighborhood, but I think they said we can't share that, correct?
Correct.
Which seems strange. You'd think you want to let the neighborhoods know where you are, so, I don't know, unless they worried people are going to stand outside and watch, you know, and get, you know, so I don't know. So I think that's where we've got to try to work through in the next day to try to get that information. So for us, we'd like to give notice out in advance to the neighborhoods of where they're going to go.
Well, basically, you're going to make the phone calls before they are there, so that's the notification.
That's exactly what we understand it to be, but we'd rather have a clear understanding of that so there's no misunderstanding for us.
Bob, now, on the phone calls, are you only calling people who are signed up to the program?
On the alert program, that's one of the things we found out, again, today, that a lot of people are not signed up. We're going to try to push that as well through email and post it, have people sign up for that, emergency alert notification. You do not have to take the weather, so if you don't want to get woken up for a tornado at 2:00 in the morning or severe flooding or anything, you don't have to. You could just take the emergency alerts from the township, so you do have the option to pick and choose what you want. But I know under, once we had back, I believe it was several years ago, there were quite a few complaints. People did not want the tornado warnings in the middle of the night.
Do we have a count right now on how many phone calls will go out at this point?
We'll get that for you, and we'll post that.
Okay. And then I would just encourage my colleagues to push this out in their social media circles and get as many people signed up as possible.
Yes. If the board would do that, that'd be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Just quickly, you did put out at one point, though, in one of the emails, there was a list of streets that had tested, where the mosquitoes had tested positive. So should we assume that that, those streets will definitely be sprayed, those areas?
Yes. And the calls that are coming, have come in in the last few weeks, I made that clear, that the route will probably be around those areas that tested positive, yes.
All right, great. Thank you, Marie. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. There were streets, they gave us a list, there were certain streets that, it was specific streets. Okay, with that, we will move on to public comment. So, any public comment?
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
My name is Keith Martin, and I know today we had another 100-year storm, and I had a few problems, and the reason I'm here is because I had the same problems four years ago, about $250,000 worth of damage to my building. And I tried in vain to get the township to come over and meet with me to go over it, because the water is all coming off of the AT&amp;T parking lot, it's coming off of the building next door, the three buildings in a row, and it's coming off of the street. It's coming down West Avenue and coming down my driveway.
I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, I don't mean to interrupt. Where exactly is your building? I'm sorry.
It's 1223 West Avenue in Wayne, right across from the American Pub. So about four years ago, when we had the rain, we got four feet of water in the building, which closed down four tenants in the lower level. Four tenants were completely wiped out. No insurance, they, each tenant, including myself, had to pay for all the repairs for everything, because, of course, we don't have flood insurance. Most people don't have flood insurance in Wayne. At that point, I made probably six phone calls to the township to ask them to come out and meet with me to go over what happened, because I know what happened. I never got a response, never got another phone call. And the day after, the day of the storm, after the storm, I told the township, I met with a guy that happened to be on the street, what the problem was, and within an hour, the township had six trucks and 10 men on the property cleaning up what I told them was the problem. That they did, that they said didn't exist. And the problem turns out to be that all the water comes off of the AT&amp;T lot. It's supposed to go back into that gully and go through the tube that goes through to North Wayne Field, and I know you're familiar with that, because that's completely flooded out. So the township closed that tube up, so the water couldn't go across the street. It had nowhere else to go, it came onto my property. So all they did to fix it was, they went up there and they took the shield out that they put in and cleaned the ravine four years ago. As I said, I've put six phone calls in and never got a returned phone call from anyone to come meet with me. So today, when it happened, we got five feet of water, and everybody's wiped out again. Today, I got a response, Andy was very nice, he was out there within an hour, Kevin was out there this afternoon, we walked through the building, but it's not their job, their job is to do what they did, but I still don't have an answer from anybody in the township as to what they're going to do about the water that's coming on my property that they should be taking care of, or the other people on their properties. About 20% of the water that comes into my building comes off of my property, and 80% of it comes off of somebody else's property. So I don't know where to turn with the township, because when I called, nobody, nobody will return the call. Nobody. I'm asking you as a board, I've been here for 38 years, I'm a homeowner, I'm a business owner, I'm a taxpayer, I don't know what to do. And I got to tell you, I work with these guys in township all the time, I have no problem with the township employees, they, they're all really good, but somebody's not returning the call because somebody doesn't want to show responsibility for what the problem is.
If you'd like to give me a call or shoot me an email, I'd be happy to sit down and have a conversation with you about where we stand on the stormwater remediation project in North Wayne. Actually, just got to have a conversation with Meliora, who's working on that earlier today, so I've got at least some up-to-date information, and hopefully I can give you some good news.
All right, but let me ask you a question, does, does that mean no one in the township takes responsibility for having meetings on that? I was sure I've called you, I didn't know who to call, I called the township, I didn't know I was supposed to call you.
Sure, I don't have the map in front of me, I'm pretty confident that the address that you just described is in my ward, so I'm going to be your commissioner right there.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
And we do have a stormwater committee, so the stormwater committee works on this project. We also have, as a board of commissioners, started working in a lot of depth on stormwater just in the past couple of months.
Okay.
We have a couple of projects that have already been voted on, and they've gone through, and we're looking to improve the situation. So I can give you more details when we're offline, I just don't want to take up a ton of time.
Perfect, no, I don't want you to. I'll give you calls tomorrow then.
Thank you much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Zankowski?
Sure, I, Mr. Martin, I've never heard from you. You've never called my office?
No, I don't want to name you.
Because, because I'd like to know, because I've walked through every, almost everybody who's been flooded, I've been through their yards, through wherever, and meeting and that, so if, if you call me, I'll be out there tomorrow to meet with you and take you know.
No, and you're right, Bob, you were never called.
Okay, but I will say that.
I called the person, I called the engineer who I was supposed to be. Dan Malloy met with me about eight years ago and drew the entire thing up and said, this is how we're going to correct this, and then, of course, he left.
I will, I will meet with, I'll be out there tomorrow morning with you, I'll work with Jennifer, we'll coordinate the time, and be out there, and we'll go through it from step, step A to Z.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you. Have a good night. Next.
Hi.
Good evening.
Leslie Morgan, Farm Road, Ward 1. Just a few comments, because there's been so many articles in the paper about Wawa, and the Wawa is not in front of you yet. I assume it will be coming. I assume it will eventually get approved. It is essentially almost as much as one can be, a buy-right plan. So in view of this board, maybe there's been a few changes, but the tenor of the board has stayed the same, where this township gave enormous zoning changes for very little in exchange. I can tell you that I have dealt with them personally, I have a Wawa in my portfolio of assets, and they are very amenable to working with communities. They will go above and beyond, they will invest in the community. We got an investment at my store, and it was, there wasn't any kind of impacts either mine was by right. We, I don't think we asked for one variance. So I'm telling you that this is a very small deal. Some of you on the board may think it's a large deal, it is a very small deal, it's 5,600 square foot probably building, but you can get a lot. And so I'm here, being a broken record, once again, saying, let's look forward, let's get our list together of what might you like, on the site and off the site, and that will do their job with the roads. I encourage all neighbors that are impacted neighbors to get their lists together and meet in an orderly fashion, so that we do get a normal deal versus other Wawas, and if we fight with them too much, we don't get a normal deal. It's a chance, and I would say that because that intersection will get some working on, I have a question that I'd like answered at the next meeting. There is the adaptive reuse, help me out, Commissioner?
Traffic Adaptive System?
Trap, Traffic Adaptive System, TAS. Villanova was agreed to fund some, but it was not the entire thing. I believe we got some from 145 King of Prussia as well. Does that extend throughout the whole town? We may look at that as something that would be good concomitantly with signalization through the town and going a little to Ivan Avenue, because the signalization, I drive it twice a week at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, it stinks, the signalization, stinks in the middle of this town. You can get caught from Farm Road, or getting out to Lancaster Farm, and I can hit all reds at 5:30 in the morning. Are you kidding? I may be the only car on the road, very few cars are on there at 5:30 in the morning. So I encourage us to use a great company, a very good credit-worthy tenant, who has proposed, I believe, stormwater. I think that might be a prescient topic today. I have good news on the library. The library, a township-owned asset, recently opened. I was over there today, I met with the principals who raised all the money, and they said, Leslie, we didn't flood, but next to us did, because they don't have stormwater. Another township-owned, but school district-owned asset is next to them. There is no stormwater there. They had to put in stormwater, they didn't flood. They were so happy about that, I'm happy about that. You should be happy about that. Wawa will also put extra landscaping and unusual designs, if you want. I mean, you know, put your list together. They're offering less pumps, they're offering to decrease curb cuts, as I understand, they're offering a decelling, they're offering maybe an investment into the Wayne Beautification Program, Bob. There may, they might be, you never know. Get your list together. So Wawa is very community-oriented, and they will take two gas stations into one. Across the street, I believe, is 24 hours, and there's a drugstore 24 hours, and there may be a CVS that may go dark near them, and there may be some other plays of reallocation of assets in that intersection. So let's be forward-thinking. Let's be forward-thinking. And that is what I want to say about Wawa, and I look forward to the other topic tonight of the sewer sale. Bye-bye.
Thank you for that advice, Leslie. Next.
Hi, Bill Bruno, 205 North Wayne Avenue, Wayne, PA.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Okay, it's nice to see everybody tonight. It's nice to see our residents also on television watching this. They say, basically, a picture says a thousand words. Well, I have a lot of pictures tonight of what happened on North Wayne Avenue today. Just so you know, I'm one of your retired police officers, retired in 2004. My job was to protect the township, and this is what I'm trying to do tonight. Is it all right if I show you guys these pictures, you could take a look at them? You want us to go through them?
Sure. You have them already?
I think we have a lot of pictures already, that we can, we can show, we can go through. I think we've got a lot of those that.
Do you have Bill's pictures?
We do. We have a lot of those.
Well, the, one of the pictures that, several of the pictures, actually show emergency vehicles being inhibited on North Wayne Avenue to be able to get to Eagle Road, where there were several vehicle extrications. This is a serious problem. I know that we're looking into it. I know there's the Poplar Bypass, there's various other things that are going on. However, one of my major concerns tonight is the basin has, now has a rupture in it. I have a picture of it here. What I would like to ask the board is to get that repaired, an emergency repair done as soon as possible, because if it goes, it's going to be catastrophic. You're talking thousands of gallons of water that's going to come down that driveway, cross North Wayne Avenue, through my property, and deluge everybody that lives on Poplar Avenue and beyond, because there's nothing on there that's going to stop it. That's, that's one of the main reasons why I'm here. Another thing, too, is that when I was there today, Bob Zankowski, who I've known for years because of the water situation here in the township, and is a great township manager, was out today, we were talking, and while we were talking, there were pedestrians trying to get through the current. Now, if these were kids, they'd be down my driveway and probably into the creek and washed beyond. We've already had one situation at St. Catherine's with that kid being, you know, washed away. It's a shame that this is, has not been addressed sooner than later, but at least there is some idea now of what maybe has to be done. But I think this emergency repair has to be done as soon as possible, because it is definitely a life and death situation. Hopefully, you know, we can get something done with this repair, and hopefully in the future, we can get something done with the Poplar Bypass without too much hassle, more studies. I think we have a lot of studies, I think we overstudied this thing. Again, I want to thank everybody for listening to me tonight. Mr. Zankowski has been out, you know, looking at this situation, he knows what's going on, and I just want to make you guys aware of it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. So any additional public comment?
Well, Bob, is there an update on the issue he just raised? Will, will there be an emergency fix?
Yes, and we've got part of the, we've got video and that, so, and pictures, so maybe after executive, not after, after public comment here, maybe we can step through that briefly.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Tony.
Good evening, again. I just wanted to apologize for my earlier presentation. I just heard public comment and thought, it's before 7:30, and I'm actually going to get out of here before then. So it was a long Board of Commissioners meeting, the last time, I think it was 12:43. So, thank you, and I will be back in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Ted, good evening. I'm Ted Merriman, I live at 109 Poplar Avenue, and today's storm put seven feet of water in my basement, and it almost reached the ceiling, and I've got utility damage as well. And I just wanted to make the township aware of that, and also, I am aware of the plans for the, some type of culvert that they're placing under the street, and I'm hoping that that can be done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ted. And Bill, you know, I think all of us up here have seen the videos, and I know Bob is going to share it with us, but we, we recognize that, you know, it was an extraordinary day today, and we are very, you know, sorry for everyone's troubles, and, you know, certainly working.
This one thing with Ted's house, I do a lot of handyman work for the Merrimans. His basement has gas in it, like most people do. I had to shut the gas off to make the house safe. Pico came out, I advised them on what happened, and they shut off the electricity. So right now, Ted doesn't have anything. So no air conditioning, there's no, you know, there's nothing going on there, so, and I'm sure other, other residents in the township also that are in the same way. So like Ted said, sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I have a cheat sheet. My name is Laura Reinhardt, I am the Parade Director for the Garrett Hill Rosemont Fourth of July Parade. I am here tonight, excuse me, to speak on behalf of the Garrett Hill Rosemont Fourth of July Parade Committee. My reason for being here is to say thank you for your support. A little over a month ago, we held the 69th Garrett Hill Rosemont Fourth of July Parade. We have a wonderful group of dedicated people who work hard to put the parade on and the party in Clemacron Park every year. It is truly a community event. People who have moved away from Garrett Hill come back year after year for the parade and the party. This year, it was very hot, but we had wonderful weather. Everyone marveled at how beautiful Clemacron Park looked, and we were pleasantly surprised by the amount of natural shade from the trees. It truly served as a beautiful backdrop for our annual celebration. With your help, we passed out almost 2,000 hot dogs, hundreds of pretzels, and plenty of beverages to the community. So thank you to Bob and the Radnor staff, and thank you for the commissioners for your support, thank you to the police support, and we on the Garrett Hill Rosemont Fourth of July Parade Committee very much appreciate it. As an FYI, after her four years of service as Director of the Parade, Kim Cruz Engelhardt's term was officially up on July 4th, and I took over. I look forward to working with all of you over the next couple of years.
Thank you very much. I think, thank you for a great parade, it was a lot of fun. Commissioner Abel marched, and Commissioner Larkin, and myself. It was a great day, and thank you very much for what you do for the community. Any additional public comment? All right, Bob, do you want to share?
Sure. Ian, if you could bring up the screens. The first, what we'll go through is video, some of the video came from residents, it's not that. But this is video from dash, dash cam from police cars, from staff that was out there. This is in front of the township building right now. You can see that, what's going on there. Actually, at some point during the day today, we actually lost access, we had no vehicles going out, none coming in. You'll see a water rescue that's being made with someone who attempted to drive through it. You'll see the fire department making a water rescue here, but that is the volume of water that was coming through here, and just knowing to the west of this, I know Commissioner Clark knows of this, where water's running from, this water originates in the South Wayne area. So if you can imagine where South Wayne is at to the township building, this is the course that it has overflowed. You'll see in some video that's in here, Midland, St. David's, that area was overwhelmed, the sanitary system was overwhelmed to where we had the manhole covers dancing about two feet above, as well as they were moved down the road. Our public work staff, want to thank them for actually covering some of these holes to avoid some of the potential tragedies. This here is in the Willow-Poplar area. You see the volume here. Trying to pick up where this, where we're at. This here is in the Willow-Poplar area. You see the volume here. Trying to pick up where this, where we're at. But you've got, that's a Brink's truck, I believe, or armored vehicle there. Sorry, Dunbar. So this is from our police dash cam about the volume of water that's running. Eithon Valley, okay. This is the middle school, which again was overwhelmed and inundated with water. And we're actually going up South Wayne Avenue, heading towards Conestoga. And you can just see the sheer volume of water that actually starts at Conestoga and works its way down, coming through the neighborhoods, just the volume that's pouring down, heading into that direction outside the memorial there. This is Banbury. You can see the water coming down from Lancaster Avenue, feeding that pond there, heading down up North Wayne Avenue. The volume of water there that's coming off of the tracks through that particular area.
Well, right there, that was where Mr. Martin's store was, wasn't it?
It was back. You'll see, we've got, we've got some footage and pictures of that. It's Mr. Bruno's yard.
What was this?
My guess is this is probably going to be somewhere, I'm going to look at Roger, this is going to be a 2- to 500-year storm, my guess, at seven inches per hour. But it's funny how we get, they ranked these as 100-year storms, 200-year storms, and they happen every other month for a time. So I'm not sure how we do there. That's, you can see Eithon Creek there of how that water is flowing. That is Conestoga and Lancaster Avenue, which a good portion of this water is heading down Conestoga, heading towards South Devon. But a lot of this is ponding right in this particular area. I want to thank the board for providing us with the four-wheel-drive vehicles and the bigger vehicles for police to be able to make it through some of these scenarios here to get to areas to block roads. We had quite a few vehicles that flooded out, driving through some of these areas, which we had to block off a number of roads. And we were using almost every public works. This is Keith Martin's area that he was just speaking about. If you notice the dumpster in the back that has actually been lifted and placed on the fire escape?
How high the water is, is that the watermark in the back?
That's actually, that was, that's where the watermark was.
Good lord.
This is at North Wayne, at West Avenue there.
That's the pizza shop?
It is. This, it used to be Cowan Park. You can see the volume of water that actually lifted those concrete bases up and out of the ground to take that bench out, which was just painted last week. So it looks nice. But the sheer power of the water going through there has broken the fence, moved a lot of that material. So that is what that park looks like now. It's the sheer volume of water.
So given this, I mean, I just have to say, thank God, no one was hurt. I know there are people who have had property damage, but, you know, thank goodness for the quick work of our police and our fire.
We'll step through just some photos then, too. That'll show the, again, these are off back decks there. This is the opening. This is the breach and the dam, not the dam, the basin at North Wayne Field, where it's now blown out and water is coming through there. This is the emergency repair we are going to have to do. You can see that it has just popped out through that area.
How quickly can we affect that repair, Bob?
We are trying to, we will get a contractor out as soon as we can. It's just how damaged it is from the inside, because we're going to have to determine that. But right there is where, and that ground is extremely soft within there. It was interesting, I know when I was out with Steve today, of how the drain got, was blocked and how product was actually put perpendicular within it. So the sheer volume and how that was actually dropped within there is incredible. Again, number of the homes, the emergency vehicles. There was at one particular time, this is actually South Wayne. If you're looking out from the parking lot of the library, the memorial, looking towards the middle school, those are cars up to their, almost to their hoods, to the windows of how much volume of water is sitting in there. This water then is heading down over the, it actually headed over the top of the middle school field and headed down Midland and those streets down there. So this is what you're looking at, volume. There's Banbury.
There's the Wawa.
The Wawa, yes. Again, that was another particular area. This is up on County Line Road, where the new Bryn Mawr Hospital expansion's taking place. This is one, we will be out tomorrow looking at this and then also trying to see what the impact from the construction has been on this particular area to see this holding water in this particular area. It has to be from blocked drains in the product running off of the material, dirt, mud, whatever else running off of that construction site. Plant Avenue, that's the back of the homes on Plant Avenue there. Actually, Plant Avenue right now has no power. Pico actually cut the power and the gas off because the water was so high. So they will return their, reinstall their power and gas as soon as they have a contractor actually come out and verify that everything is okay before they relight that. That car was moved, yet they did not park like that. So that car was, the volume of water. And I know that we continue to get pictures from around the township that are coming in. So we'll continue to keep adding to what we have because it's just not in some of these particular areas that we actually had seen some of these.
But is there even a solution for this? I mean, realistically?
If, in a volume of rain where seven inches per hour, I wish I could say that there's a solution there. You're not going to control this volume, like right here, this is something we've seen typical in a number of areas and not under this volume of water that came down today that we have problems. Luke, you have in your area that these happen. Today, they're dancing about two feet in the air and then they move. But again, too, this is different area of the township where, again, you're overwhelmed under, and back to your question, though, at seven inches of rain, there's nothing that's going to, per hour, that's going to stop anything. It's the smaller storms that we have to worry about and try to control and manage those types of scenarios. But I think moving some of these through. That's a good point from Steve, that that manhole cover is 150 pounds. So that shows you what that is being lifted up there at 150 pounds. And we try to encourage residents, don't walk in the street when you see it flooded or when the water's rushing. Because I know there were a number of residents, we tried to get out of the way and out of the road when water was going. South Devon, there was an area where the berm broke loose, big pieces of asphalt. And I know, I talked to a couple of people, and they were standing out in the water as big pieces of asphalt were coming down. I know they were trying to just get information. But there was a, again, and you'll see in a couple of these pictures here how several pieces, somebody lost their apron of their driveway.
That was on Midland.
That was on Midland. They actually lost their entire apron, it's lifted up. And we've got several other areas in the township where the pavement just picked itself up and moved. We are also encouraging residents, if you had flood damage to your house and are trying to put materials out, if you put them out before Wednesday morning, we will go around the entire township, pick it up. Because we know there are other homes that got flooded that are not in these particular areas. They got water in their basement, there is damage to carpet, furniture, other items. If you place those out, we are going to go throughout the entire township and get those. There's a vehicle that was impacted by the storm.
Bob, you said anytime before Wednesday of this week?
Wednesday, yes. Because Wednesday, we will go throughout the entire township and pick up. So we will try to put that phone call out then, too, as well, in the morning to let everyone know.
But not yard waste? So not yard waste?
Well, everybody's going to put it out anyhow, the yard waste. Because I think you've got a lot of storm damage as well. That came down a lot of bigger branches that fell.
So you'll take either?
Steve?
Okay.
We're taking it all down to the trash steam plant so we can take them both together and take them down there. We'll take whatever's in, we did this in the past for prior storms, down on Midland especially. So, not a problem.
Thank you, Steve. Well, I think, I speak for all of us, you know, thank you for your hard work. I know the police were working really hard, Steve, you and your crew. I know Kevin and, you know, Bob, everyone out, working with the residents. You know, I can't even imagine. I mean, people certainly are inundated, and it is devastating. So I also want to give a shout-out, I think, to the Radner Fire Company. I have a friend there who told me they had 37 calls today, 19 were water rescues, and six people were physically rescued from their vehicles. So we are very fortunate to have so many wonderful first responders who are working so hard on behalf of our township to keep everyone safe. Bob, do you have any other thoughts? I mean, I know that Steve isn't here tonight, certainly on a well-earned vacation. But I know, you know, we do have some projects in the works.
We do. We have the Poplar Project that incorporates that entire North Wayne area that's being looked at by Meliora. The Midland area, which I know we say Midland bypass, but that's that whole area down in that particular area, St. David's, all of those streets, Aberdeen, all included in there that are going to be looked at. So all of those particular areas are being looked at. That was approved by the board. So we are moving forward on those particular projects. We are out to bid now on the cleaning and restoration of the North Wayne Basin that went out today. But we're going to have to make repairs now to that basin without waiting.
Bob, the takeaway from these videos and the pictures to me is that these problems are throughout the township. And it's really difficult to go into a neighbor on South Devon or West Wayne where they have a flooded basement. And their comment to me is, "Don't tell me we don't have a flood problem in West Wayne." But yet, we don't see a lot of the funding going towards those projects. And we have $3.5 million in the stormwater fee that everybody pays into, and they don't see any benefit from it. So, you know, I wasn't planning on bringing this up tonight and wasn't, and I'm not prepared to, but I think it's a discussion that we need to have going forward is, we have this pot that everybody pays into, why are we not allocating it amongst the seven wards? So each ward is looking at projects because residents know where they can impact the area.
We have discussed projects. We have been prepared to go forward with projects. We just need authorization to go.
Do we have public comments?
Oh, I think Jake's point was that...
Wait, hold on, Rich, one second. My point was, you know, each ward, they have projects that, you know, they may not be big projects, smaller projects that may make an impact now. Why are we waiting?
That's a good question, because we've been waiting for board approval. So if the board, we've been, we've studied, we've been ready to make improvements seven years ago.
But allocate for what?
So, and we actually have money budgeted. We have put proposals in front of the board for projects. And then we have had multiple studies. We had one that we just spent $500,000 on a study, that actually, I'm not sure what the value we had of that study.
Okay, I think...
I mean, my feeling is that the projects we're going to see come to fruition were as a result of last year's budget, right? So this year, so this year during the budget discussions, you know, if we want to take a look at what outside of North Wayne and South Wayne is being affected, that's the time to do it, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
And to also talk to the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee, because obviously they're working with staff on a recommended budget.
Absolutely.
Well, I'd still like to have a discussion and see if, if there's support for allocating it amongst all the wards.
My view is that all the, that we should equally allocate between all the wards, all of the monies. But if you're, what this actually does show also is that we have an overbuilding problem. If you're really serious, we will not allow any new impervious to further exacerbate this problem. And these pictures are striking, so.
I think probably on our next agenda, we can put a, you know, comprehensive discussion about additional stormwater projects. I know you guys have a lot in the hopper that you had wanted to bring forward or have brought forward before. Some of those that we've got, that we talked about last time and approved moving forward on, were ones that were brought forward, you know, from before. So I think that we can definitely have those conversations. I know that, you know, today is like today, put all of this top of mind. And I think that we need to make it, you know, top of mind more than just these, when we have events like this. And I know that, you know, the staff is working on that, and we can continue to have those conversations. I think, Mr. Abel, your point is well-taken.
Well, all the water's subsided now, though, Bob, right? Is any, what conditions is...
That's correct. Everything has subsided at this point. So we started, we've been cleaning up, so all the water has subsided.
So when a building gets flooded for hours, is everything ruined in the same way that a building that's flooded for days is? Or is there, can you, can they salvage, can you salvage some of the materials?
Water damage is going to be water damage in there. Now, if it sits in there for longer times, you know, longer periods of times, for days, you're going to have, again, additional damage that's going to be put on, put on their stress upon the foundations of those types of buildings compared to what you have within hours of time to where it comes in, hits the impact, and then the drain away from it. So there's different impacts that go on to that.
Bob, do you know if there's any areas outside of Poplar and Plant that have lost electricity and gas, or still don't have electricity?
Those are the areas that we're aware of, that Pico came out. And I know when I was out there, we're notifying the residents because of the flood and because of how high the water got close to their electric meters. That's why, and they were also getting smells of natural gas. That's why they cut the power.
Is there a reason why, I know you just said it's because of natural gas smells, but is there a reason why they shut them off there? Why were they so affected and not other areas?
Because of the high, the high level of water and how high the water, the flood was. Because where the meters were located, all on the properties there, that's why they decided, and that's where they picked up the smell of natural gas.
So it's an issue of severity of flooding in that area in particular?
That, and the smell of natural gas of how strong it was.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob and staff, you know, thank you all for this, you know, comprehensive overview of, you know, what happened today. It is definitely, you know, we will continue the conversation. We started it last month, and we are going to, you know, continue on. I believe that the community, no matter where you live, is interested in the stormwater issue and making sure that the funds that they're paying into are being utilized. So, but with that, we do have a rather lengthy agenda to continue on with, so I want to move on. We're going to go ahead and move up the, Bob, is that all right? You're, we're good?
Leslie want to say something?
Do you have a comment, Leslie?
I think you're mischaracterizing exactly what's happening with the stormwater fee. There has been, Luke knows, I know, on the Banbury ones, money was allocated, it was approved, it was designed and approved, and then late to the party came some of my neighbors, rightly or wrongly, I am not. And they were able to say, "No, we don't want it because they're going to come up our road with pipes and it's, our road will be dug up for a while." And I believe that this same kind of thing happened with a project in Commissioner Clark's ward. And I believe it was going to happen in a third project. So the fee was enacted, I call it a tax. But the fee was enacted, people were up in arms because we had one of these big storms and it started this. Bob and his staff did his job. They did their job. End of story. What happened with the board is that they listened to a small group that did not want to hear that all these areas collectively, if you start, maybe you'll start seeing the benefits in 10 years. That's why the fee, tax, was enacted. It's a long-term planning thing. But Commissioner Larkin, my new commissioner, talks about political will. The will is with you guys, that when neighbors complain, it's a fee, it's a tax. You have three and a half million that you have not distributed because neighbors pushed back on the designs. You had professionals doing... You had professionals doing their job. This is one where I say, "I don't think that should be allowed." We have to start somewhere. We have to put a stake in the ground. And Commissioner Larkin, the reason why Poplar in that area is flooded the most is because it is a flood plain. That doesn't make it more valuable than other projects that were approved first, and I don't want to give up our one point one million that was allocated by the walla, because you did see that it got a lot of flooding. So, there have been projects that have been approved, we should do them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. All right, so we are going to move on. We are gonna take community development, we're going to move that up, so items H and I, we will take that section now. So, the first one will be H, the 200 South Eithan Avenue Settlement Agreement. Mr. Rice?
Yes. This is a resolution of a longstanding property maintenance problem in 200 South Eithan involving the mansion there that suffered a fire in two thousand and twelve. The property owner had been in some fairly lengthy litigation over insurance proceeds. That got settled about a year and a half ago, I guess, and then the township initiated property maintenance enforcement action in two thousand and sixteen. So, that resulted in us appearing in court on the twenty-third of July. This is the proposed settlement agreement, which Judge Burr was involved with in terms of some of the parts of this. The neighbors out there have been pretty actively involved in this in terms of the maintenance issues. There were four or five neighbors at that hearing, and it's my recommendation that the board approve this. This would then be, go back to Judge Burr to be entered as a court order, which we can enforce easier than what we normally have to do when we start from scratch. So, it's up for the board approval. If you have any questions?
Any commissioner questions? All right. Well, let me, I'll entertain a motion to approve 200 South Eithan Avenue Settlement Agreement.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay. So, any commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of approving the settlement agreement for 200 South Eithan Avenue, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Abel absent. Okay, Resolution 2018-82, approving the inter municipal liquor license transfer application of Moseria LLC pursuant to the Code of Radnor Township. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Ken Taylor substituting for Nick Canelia on behalf of the applicant.
This, as the board knows, you had a hearing on this, discussion on this application at your last meeting. This is the resolution, which would approve the transfer of an existing liquor license to this particular site in Radnor Township. Some of these conditions were discussed. We did provide for hours of operation, and a requirement that if the liquor license would be transferred somewhere else within Radnor, the applicant would have to come back in front of the board. And that's been a pretty standard condition that you've attached to. The giant liquor license, the, you've had about three or four of these over the last five years.
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone, similar, no outdoor amplified music, nothing that unusual about this particular application. So, it's before the board for approval.
Ken?
Again, commissioners, the proposed resolution correctly reflects all items as were discussed and heard before the board at the time of your hearing, a previous hearing on this matter. I have with me tonight Ralph Sotero, who was identified at that hearing as the head chef and manager, and he is here to assure you through me that as opposed to the prior ownership and management of this particular restaurant, this ownership and management is here to fully comply with all of Radnor Township's ordinances and all of the requirements of this liquor license transfer resolution.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Yeah, I got a motion to approve Resolution 2018-82.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any commissioner comment? Okay, any staff comment? Any public comment? All right, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-82, approving the liquor license transfer application for Moseria LLC pursuant to the Code of Radnor Township, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes, or doesn't pass for lack of majority? Three to two? Three to? Three to? It passes three to?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a resolution. Oh, all right, it's not an ordinance. Okay. All right, motion passes three to two with Commissioner Abel absent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So now, we will go back to public safety. Item A, Ordinance 2018-09, the adoption of 741-747 Moore Avenue, no parking between signs. Who will take this one?
All right, and to get it going, I'll move for the adoption of Ordinance 2018-09. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Lieutenant Dietrich, did you have something you wanted to add?
That was just placed in there for obstruction. The person requesting it couldn't back out of her driveway. There's a large truck that was actually blocking the roadway, so it was a safety issue, so that's why they was there.
Is this you?
No, it's mine.
It's you? Okay. All right, any commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of Ordinance 2018-09, the approval, or the adoption of 741-747 Moore Avenue, no parking between signs, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing. Okay, Ordinance 2018-10, the adoption of 250 North Aberdeen Avenue, new handicap parking space. Can I get...
I'll move for the adoption of Ordinance 2018-10.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion, anything from staff? Okay, I know we discussed this before. Is there any commissioner comment on this?
I've got a lot of emails with questions. They fall into basically two different buckets. The first is, what is the rubric in order to get a handicap parking spot? And the answer is, we just completely defer to your doctor. We're not physicians, and we don't have the capacity to make that judgment in a public meeting. It would be inappropriate. So, if you have a handicapped placard already, you have to go through the process by approaching staff traffic first, but you will eventually get that spot. The other question is, what do we do if the person who gets that spot moves away? And the answer is, you do the exact same thing in reverse, just let us know, "We're doing this by crafting an ordinance." We can do the same thing in reverse, and it goes away. So, it's not like you lose a parking spot in a very crowded street forever. But this is, for us, a nondiscretionary issue. Since we have the program, we don't get to call balls and strikes about who is or who is not handicapped.
Okay, any other additional commissioner comment? Staff comment? Public comment? All right, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 2018-10, 250 North Aberdeen Avenue, new handicap parking space, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing. All right. Personnel Administration.
Do we, do we want to do item F before this? I know we have the applicants here before we get into a, what I see being a prolonged discussion.
Sure.
Why don't we, why don't we get them out of here?
All right, so we'll move on to Public Works and Engineering.
If they want to go, they can stick around if they want to, of course.
All right, so we will move to item F. Resolution 2018-83, 409-411-413, East Lancaster Avenue, Emerson, final land development. They're requesting a waiver. I have Mr. Rice.
Yeah, just to provide a summary, this, the applicant has been through the planning process, has been in front of the township for over a year, has been to the zoning hearing board. One of the issues that came up after the last board meeting on this, and which was brought to both Steve Norcini and my attention, was to extend the sidewalk along from the property boundary here down through to the corner past the VFW. There's, that was not part of the, it's not a requirement of the township's code, but, so that resulted in a conversation that Steve and I had with the applicant and the representatives about doing that, which they've agreed to do, it's in the resolution, but also, since there really wouldn't be any changes in the plan between preliminary and final, advancing this to a final plan approval, I think Roger can address whether there's anything major left on this, but what you would get at preliminary is gonna be the same that, what you would get at final is the same that was before you last month at preliminary. So, there's nothing new to happen with this particular plan. They've asked for that waiver to treat the preliminary as if it's a final, which the board has done in other instances in the past for similar types of projects. So, it's up for board discussion. The applicant's here. Mr. Fromhold is their counsel, and I think all the issues have been addressed, waivers are listed in the resolution.
Gentlemen, do you have anything you want to add? Roger, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Steve was the one that had an issue, so there were changes to the plans Steve needed to review, and Steve specifically asked that we not have a preliminary final approval on this project. Steve's not here to clarify exactly what the concerns were, so I don't think this is ready to go forward. And also, you know, this is really a dangerous precedent. We should not be waiving the rules on an ad hoc basis. We do a preliminary, we do a final. We should not be changing the rules arbitrarily, and we've been doing it more and more often, waiving and allowing people to move forward. You just saw what we have in Wayne, the damage from flooding, floodwaters that come through. That is an unintended consequence from too many waivers. We shouldn't do it. We should, if we're gonna make a mistake, we should at least take all the time and try to figure out and minimize and get everything that we can think of before approving a project. So, we shouldn't waive it, and Steve's not here anyway, so I'm not gonna vote for that.
I can tell you that Steve was actively involved in this discussion with me and the applicant about the sidewalk extension. He was fine, Commissioner Booker, with, because what he said to me is that there was no additional conditions that would attach to this plan. So, I don't know what else he wanted to look at.
I don't know what he said, I don't remember what he said either. I guess we could pull up the video and look at it. He specifically did not want to have a preliminary final, because I was going to, we talked about that specifically. There were issues that were not resolved, and I think we should hear from Steve before we move forward with this project.
Is there, Roger, is there someone else that could shed some light on that in Steve's absence, or Bob?
Steve didn't communicate anything to me that there was a holdup. I mean, we've discussed this plan in the review letters, and he didn't bring anything to my attention.
Rich, I seem to recall when we had this last, this discussion last time, I think you had raised some concerns with the slope of the parking lots. Was that the issue? No?
I hadn't raised the issue. Steve had specific issues relating to a change in the plan, and he wanted time to review that with the applicant before we approved it. The applicant at the prior meeting said, "Could you please approve it this evening?" And Steve said, "No, let me look at the plan and review this with the applicant." And so, that was, it was the same request last meeting. The applicant wanted a preliminary final, and we didn't, we didn't grant it then based on Steve's request that we not, we not approve it.
Let's make sure the record's clear. We got a letter after the last meeting from the applicant, it's in the file, take a look at it, asking that this be treated as a final. So, it was not in front of the board at the last meeting.
No, it was raised, the issue was raised, and we didn't consider it.
Okay. I'm just telling you that when you, if you want a shadow provision waived, we get letters from property owners, and we received that letter after the last meeting.
Counsel at the last meeting specifically requested.
I'll let Mr. Fromhold address it, I'm sure.
So, just to remind everyone, so our last meeting, this was on for caucus, and it was a preliminary, continued from June eleventh. So, that is what we discussed. There was no preliminary final at the last one. It was caucus, preliminary, continued from June eleventh.
That's incorrect. The counsel for the applicant requested the evening that we do a final, and we did not consider that request.
I am reading off of last Monday, July sixteenth's agenda. It says caucus, preliminary, continued from June eleventh.
Well, if anything, you should read off the minutes, and it might be different, but even if it's not in the minutes, you would have to check the video, and it was specifically discussed and not considered.
Let me just say, Commissioner Booker, I think you may be mistaken. What we specifically asked last time was that you take action on approving a preliminary plan, and we were told, "No, we're at caucus, and we're not here to approve a preliminary plan." We hadn't even thought of seeking final plan approval until we had further discussions with, with staff, with Solicitor Rice. A question came up as to whether our client was willing to extend sidewalk for the American Legion property that is between our property and, and the corner, and we said, "Fine, we'll put in a new sidewalk that extends from our property to that intersection, including a new handicap ramp." And the thought was, and I think everyone agreed with this concept, that since our plans really had been through review after review and have had multiple reviews by this board, and since nothing would change in a request for final plan approval, that it made sense to us, and we thought, given what we are doing with this application by way of additional public benefit, it was a reasonable request that we have preliminary final approval. So, we are satisfied with this resolution. The waivers, I think, have been before you at the last few caucus meetings, and we would request that this be approved. I might add that this project actually reduces the impervious cover, now that we hear the rain on the roof here. It reduces the impervious coverage for this property by five percent, which I think is significant. So, in addition to the reduction of impervious coverage, there is stormwater management. While this property isn't going to address the photographs and videos that you saw earlier, it is doing the small part that this property can do with respect to doing something positive for stormwater management in the township. So, we would respectfully ask that you adopt the resolution as presented.
So, as a way of clarification, you did request and thought it made sense to do preliminary final, and we discussed it at the last meeting.
That's incorrect.
What did you just say right here?
No, no, I did not say final. I think, Commissioner Booker, you're the only one who has mentioned that, or suggested that we sought final approval last time. We did not, what we...
No, I said you sought preliminary final for consideration at that, for this plan at the last meeting.
We did not. That's incorrect. You can check your tape, and that is just incorrect.
You just said that you did.
No, I did not. I just said that we requested preliminary plan last time. We did not...
And that it made sense that we would also, because it has been through? What did you just say?
No, you're, you're misstating what I said. This time, we are requesting preliminary final. Last time, we requested preliminary.
Yeah, I think we're ready to move forward.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I am looking at the minutes from the last meeting, and it says nothing about final. Okay? All right, I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion to approve Resolution 2018-83, 409-411-413, East Lancaster Avenue, Emerson, final land development. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional commissioner comment?
So, Steve had issues that he needed to resolve. What's the resolution of those issues? It's just, oh, Steve said it's fine, right? That's what...
Steve and I discussed this plan... Steve and I discussed this plan after the last meeting. He has no issues with this resolution. If he did, it would not be on the agenda.
Well, why did he ask for it to be reviewed?
I don't know that he did, Rich. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't
So, so you're all, you're calling me a liar then, right?
Um, no. No, I would never do that.
Yeah. Yeah. Steve specifically said he had issues to review and that is why we did not do the preliminary approval or any approval
No, it was caucus. It was a caucus last time. That's why there was no vote. That's why.
It was requested that we make a vote last meeting.
On preliminary.
So, Mr. Zankowski, the, this, the agenda is prepared. Mr. Norcini was still here. Did he see this?
That's correct. Yes, he did.
Okay. So he saw this and he saw
That's correct.
Final land development. Okay. And he had no issues that he expressed to you?
No, he did not.
Okay. All right. Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Roger, I have one clarification on your letter from July 9th. It says, the applicant appeared before the planning commission on September 5th, 2018.
Yeah, that's, that's a typo. That date's incorrect.
What's, what's the correct date?
I have to go back and look through my notes here. If you want to give me a minute.
It was last year. Seventeen. Yep.
Anything else?
Is that, is that going to flood again on the entrance so we can't leave?
That's actually one of the things I was going to mention to the president, that given the storm and looking at the weather radar, that item C, D, and E, I'd like to ask if those get pushed to the September meeting. Because we're, I'm going to guess that because of the volume of the water that's coming down that we can hear, I'm going to guess we may have some issues, so. And also too, is what Commissioner Booker just pointed out, we may have an item out here, so.
Okay. All right, well, let's, I'm, that's fine, but let's finish this up. So is there any additional comment on item F, Resolution 2018-83? Any commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Any public comment on this item? All right, I'm going to go ahead and call it. Resolution, approval of Resolution 2018-83, 409-411-413, East Lancaster Avenue, final land development. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Motion passes five to one. Oh, I'm sorry. Who about to, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. Four to two. Okay. So we will go ahead and table everything under personnel administration, items C, D, and E. Do I need to get a motion? Do we need to make a motion or we can go ahead and?
I mean, to be formal about it, I'll move, I'll move the table items C, D, and E. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And then we can
All right, all those in favor of tabling items C, D, and E till September?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Okay, so the last, so the last thing we have is finance and audit. We've got a discussion and direction regarding the combination of the township sewer and stormwater billing. Mr. White.
Thank you. This should only take about an hour. So by the time we're done with this, the flooding out front will be receded and we'll be able to leave.
Is this pressing, Bill, or is this?
A little bit. We've tried on, to get on the last few agendas and it's, it's always missed the mark. What we're looking for from the board is, and I presented the board with a memorandum at the end of July that kind of outlined what it is that we want to do. Real quickly, what the request is, is that we take the two different bills that we send out, one being the stormwater and the other being the sanitary sewer, and combine those into one bill. Right now, the stormwater goes out in January. There's 30 days to pay. The sanitary sewer goes out in April. There's 30 days to pay. What we are proposing is that we move the stormwater back to April, combine it with the sanitary sewer bill, and then give 60 days to pay. At the same time, there's a higher interest and penalty rate on the sanitary sewer versus the stormwater. We would propose to lower that to be consistent with what currently exists for the stormwater. We weren't able, if we were designing this now, we'd set it up this way. But we didn't have this capability with the software back in 2013, 14, when the stormwater bill was added. So the new software that we're implementing now has the capability to have one bill with the two different, two different fees on it. So that we're asking right now for direction. The reason why it's coming to the board is it will require changes to the, the code. And then effective with the 2019 billing, there would be one bill in April instead of two. And just quickly, the genesis comes from complaints or comments that we receive from residents as well as efficiencies gained administratively that were outlined in the memo.
Makes sense to me. So should we
Is this going to affect the collection for the first quarterly payment to RHM?
Not at all, because we're not moving the sanitary sewer, other than giving an extra 30 days on the backend to pay it. So the first quarter's already paid at that point.
Right.
I just had a quick question. So will each fee still be on this one bill? Will each be separate? So it'll be kind of itemized out?
It will absolutely be, yes. It'll absolutely be itemized as two different lines on one bill.
Bill, my concern is with residents who, you know, who plan and, you know, could be on a limited budget and they are planning for a bill in January and a bill later. And how that would impact their, their own personal budget if they're now having to pay one larger sum.
Yeah. Well, we took that into consideration, which is why we decided, I mean, by far, the stormwater fee is much, much less than the sanitary sewer significantly. So that was the fee that we decided to move and we moved it back in the calendar versus moving anything up in the calendar. So for those folks that plan that meticulously, it's, it's $29.58 dollars that they'll hold on to for a couple more months before they have to pay it to the township.
The other question I, the other question I would have is, if you combine those two bills, are you still separating, separating them into two different accounts? I never, at some point, are they going to be commingled and now we have a large?
Never. So that was the problem we had with the old software. It was not able to take that and split it up into two different bank accounts. We are able to do that with our deposits now. So it, we won't have that problem. The lockbox that we utilize that most payers use to make the payments, we'll have the capability of splitting the deposit up and putting them into two different accounts.
What would happen if, either mistakenly or for financial reasons, I made a partial payment? How would you just divide them between the two accounts?
That's, that's a good question. And I should have introduced Amy Lacy, our revenue coordinator. She was nice enough to, to stick around tonight. She's the one that makes this whole thing go. And actually, she's the one, four years ago, that decided to take this on instead of outsourcing. It would have been much more expensive. But to answer that direct question, I'm not sure on the partial payment issue.
There's a payment order that's in the, in our software system. So if you made a partial payment, the system would actually look at that payment order and apply most of the money towards that, what's number one, which would probably be the sewer rent, I would think.
That makes sense. I'd ask if you could just check with counsel to make sure that that's not going to put us in trouble by turning a fee into a tax or something or commingling funds or another supposed to be. I don't, I don't want to risk that.
No, that, that's, that's fair enough. Yeah. And I'm 98% certain it will not jeopardize the status as fees, but you're right. We'll be absolutely certain before we bring an ordinance in front of you.
Any additional
Are we, so are we voting to approve this tonight?
No, the, the next steps would be, we would have an ordinance. What I was looking for was some sort of general direction, because I didn't want to waste your time with an ordinance if there was no flavor on the board for it. So what would happen next is we'd bring an ordinance to you at the first meeting in September for introduction and then we'd advertise and have that on for adoption at the second meeting in September.
Yeah, because I would like to hear resident feedback and how that would impact
Sure.
the township residents.
The sewer is, that's a, that's a flat rate, right? That's not one of the ones, I can't remember. It's not one of the ones that's, you know, you pay by this date, it's this amount, this date, it's this amount. This is a flat. The sewer's flat.
Yeah, they're, they're both, they're both flat fees.
Okay.
Flat rates. The fees are based on some other indicator, either a unit or water usage.
All right, well, do, I think we have consensus to go ahead with your plan and bring us something for consideration at the next meeting?
Very good. Yes, absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for being here. Thank you for staying. I appreciate it. All right. Okay. Onto new business, recycling program. I'm not sure what that
Sure. I mean, do we want to have this discussion or do we want to wait till we have a full board and it's not pouring rain outside?
House?
I'm, I'm asking them, be kind to my fellow commissioners if they want to.
I, yeah, I think new business, old business, I think these, we'll wait until we're all here.
Okay, then I'm okay with tabling those till the September meeting.
You're okay? All right. So we will hold the recycling program and utility wires until the next meeting. And we will also wait for old business. Mr. Zankowski? We're going to go ahead and hold the old business, the update on professional services. Is that till September? Is that good or do you need that now?
That's fine.
Okay. All right.
Bob, just real quick, I got a text from Heather Gill. She asked if you can send police to 431 Ivan Ave. A Pico pole is sparking and starting a small fire apparently.
Got it. We will send somebody there.
Okay.
431 Ivan.
Yeah, that's like right up the street, huh? Okay. So last public comment? Do we have any, any public comment? This is nice, it rains every time. All right, then I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes five to nothing. Everyone, please be safe getting home. Thank you all very much.